All time for testing or anything like that. That was the biggest expense for us. Our PPE, we were looking at thirty-eight hundred dollars roughly. But keep in mind, we did receive some funds from Corners then to the companies for the part of our billing for the Fire DMS. And they actually had turned us on to a roughly seventy-two hundred dollars grant that we were able to receive before CARES money even came out. But they got high with money. They had reached out and seventy-two hundred, any of the PPE for Fire DMS was covered with that. That was a little bit of a help for us too. If you guys want to talk about any of this, anything that kind of makes up what the 2020 buckets are, I can kind of give you additional information if you'd like. Any questions about some of the expenses, what was going in there, things like that?
Being so compliant with public health.
So a big majority of that was, we spent seventeen thousand dollars on laptops. We purchased twenty new laptops to prepare for staff having to work from home. That's the biggest chunk of that. And then it gets into our payroll. What, that's the category we're placing, who we have to pay out for individuals not paying for work.
For those employees that may not have a nine eleven for example, are you covering their costs for services?
No, we're not.
Is that helping through the CARES app?
Oh, okay, there's something that we could talk about. We had thought about maybe reaching out to Horizon and getting some hot, other little Wi-Fi and iPod devices. And maybe doing an inventory of them and let the employees check them out from IT. We haven't gone that route yet. But it's possible that we do something like that too.
But I'm thinking of employees working from home using their personal airtime when we run. I was running off this afternoon. But they may be a consideration for help offset for us.
Yeah, what we have, what we're working towards, still we don't want to show up for the VPN to have the access that they need. So that's something that Travis and I are working on too. So kind of like phases, you know, get the laptops in there, get the people home. And it's, we're just, I don't know, error, I guess is the best way to say it, we don't go until we, you know.
I spoke to the, Mrs. Newville today, I think she probably called this question to you also.
Loretta?
Yeah.
Yes.
She was asking about hotspots for parents with students that don't have access. Does that help?
Yes, it is something we can do. It is open, but when I was talking to her, I, you know, kind of talked to her about some people, even if you have a hotspot in your county.
Still don't have access.
Available, so, but that's not something, we could always visit, we could always reach out to the landowners and talk to them about, you know, what kind of deal can you work with us to even work with the schools and stuff like that, yeah. What we've been doing is talking to IT Travis, I have to say it that way. And trying to find out if there's other locations that we could put some of the, the Wi-Fi. Yes, yeah, we, Bia Frager had kind of talked to us about maybe putting in some of those devices at some of the churches possibly. And the concern with that, with Loretta was, what do they do when they get there then, you know? You're going to make them sit in a car while they're trying to do their schoolwork and things like that? And I just, I didn't, we understand that, but we're just not sure what direction we go.
Certainly cancel by everybody that does not have. Yeah, but anyway, I got a call, I know she was supposed to be here.
Yeah, and I really loved hearing her ideas too, and that's what she, we both agree, yeah, at this point, we're all just trying to think out our top.
Yeah. That's like schools said, they were going to pull one of these school buses and just park them around the county, so like given generic places that have parks, spots that don't have them, that maybe we could do the same thing, because we don't have that many kind of buildings, but we could try maybe all parts of the县. We, I mean, but here a fellow person, but anyway.
We are actually, I put one at the front surround, we're going to put one here. We've talked about it, there's a couple of years that we could actually.
Right, because our station has great service, I don't know how far that goes.
Right.
Some people, you know, the library has it of course. Yeah, I'm thinking outside the boxes, I'm looking for even, I don't know how it would work, but maybe even.
I think houses in the fire station, it would hurt if you blocked them.
I was, the signal's coming in, it's like two.
Maybe something could be a holiday, right?
Right.
Parking lot.
What if they have, what kind of, does, oh.
It depends on the, the receivers, you know, transmitters.
The, the library.
The library can reach out to the parking lot. The schools, you can reach there if you drive in, and I think I'll reach out to the parking lot. It depends on where you put it and the actual power of the unit. There's no step.
Travis, of course, actually, he's actually the school director also, he's kind of gets their heads together on maybe, you know, how many kids are we thinking about, what location, things like that, maybe he said it's communication.
I would really kind of put the units on the schools, that's, that's the ones that are going to plan the. There's a must.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
I saw you on a ad on the paper, but it was on the website that showed that they're forming businesses, what they had to do to get this stuff. I didn't know if you had been able to reach out, because I know some restaurants came and contacted me briefly. Said, you know, they were saying, maybe they could get it, and I said, I hope that they would have on there, looked those criteria up.
Yeah, Olivia actually posted that last week, we have been dealing some phone calls today, we've already started hearing some chatter about it. We are going to, we plan on going out to the local businesses, maybe we're trying to come up with a flyer and then make sure that everyone is made aware. A flyer would actually be mailed out too, to anyone who has a business license, because we have a lot of small businesses that really don't, you know, that don't have earth and office or such, so we were actually going to try to, you know, print that stuff too, and that flyer after that. And the question is about the 2020 expenses. As far as I know, that's where we're at with that right now. It's like all the department has finally got. You got to remember that when this was going on at the very beginning, no one knew about the CARES, so it was kind of us trying to go, okay, for the last two months, I believe I'm putting it into our budget, and it can actually be reimbursed by CARES, so it kind of took a while for us to get to where we're at today with that. Moving forward, so anything that wasn't 2020, the county is reimbursing ourselves for. So moving forward, as of July one, all the department has, anyone who wants any of the CARES funding has to go through the process of requesting it through emails, you know, giving us the reason why it's related to COVID, what the quotes are, what the expenses, and then it goes through the group. But we all decide, yes, approve it or not, and then, and then it goes that way. We're actually not using the funding to what has been approved, yeah. And that's what we've been working forward to for 2021 now, so we basically have, we're hoping for a new budget for 2021, and it's CARES budget. And we've had a lot of responses from our departments. We've been chatting with the sheriff, we've been chatting with Fire DMS, trying to make sure that we're capturing as much as we can. I would say we're in the first stage of that right now, though. We're still just kind of, just, just going away, trying to, outside the box. So when you look at the estimates for 2021, you will see what the schools have asked. That was prior to last week, we hadn't received those, Bobby wanted to talk about that. The local, we increased the local business agency organizations to 25, which is now part of that program that we have out on our website. Fifty thousand for EDA, the grant program. And the below items are just some of the things that we've already kind of been hit with. So the circuit court is one, we're, we're working, Judge Bondron is going to need some extra area that we're going to be able to have court for them. So we're going to do our best to utilize the section on the courthouse that hasn't been finished. And put some AC over there, some tables, some chairs, make it usable for that. And we will be using CARES money. The quote we're at right now is thirty-nine thousand for that, and the majority of that is twenty thousand for the HVAC. You guys got to keep in mind, there was one outlet in that area, there's no ductwork grant. So this is a challenge for some of the sheriff right now.
That's a good thing, that's more than we have spent with this one year.
Right, and even with anything that's portable, we're, we're making sure that, you know, that, okay, make sure it's something that we can use somewhere else also, to not just specific to that. That circuit court cost actually includes a full-time custodian also, five months worth of a foul ring under five bucks. Because of the needs of the circuit court, we had to add an additional custodian for us to have. It's something we probably should have done three months ago, honestly, because of all the additional sanitizing that we need to do at courts and everything else. So our staff is just really struggling, and we've made the decision to go ahead and use CARES funds for the last, the five months we have, and then January, I will come back to you. January, I don't know where I can find that money for the rest of 2021.
The 360 account, what, what are we doing?
360.
Eating and airing also?
A little bit, we're doing some painting, we're putting some flooring now, a little bit of HVAC, just trying to get it up and running, so we'll have a place for programs to be held for the teenagers, for the adults. Just giving an area where we can actually, we're creating new programs, I would say COVID-related programs. To kind of give some people a place to go this fall too.
Does it move that yet, or is she?
They have, they just, we finally get to hold of that area this week, so the sheriff and the department coordinator for, we got to deploy and get that moved. IT services, supplies and equipment, that is, we are intending to put two kiosks here, one kiosk in the, in the lobby here, and one kiosk over at the courthouse where people can actually come in and pay their bills, tax bills. Anything that they could actually do online, but they don't have a computer access, that they could do it here now too. We're thinking that would help out with maybe when the treasurer's office, maybe eliminating them having to be face to face and things like that. Like I said, it's a standalone type thing, it all comes through the prayer and everything, so the person will hardly see who went, they pray. That's a little bit of a portion of that additional items, I'm sorry.
Is this something that they're going to have to do with the credit card and have to pay that?
Yeah, well, now, you can do it, just like if you were at home, because you can do paycheck for the treasurer and things like that too. So if anything like, that you could have done at home, you can do the same thing.
Natasha. A question, I'm probably backing up because I am having still a difficult time not hearing you, but some of the stuff. Did we not talk about the courts and the renovation a little bit there?
The courthouse for the jury trial?
Yes. Are they talking, are we still talking about putting portable units in there, or could we go ahead and, and put the, like the space packs in and get it all done now?
We're actually proposing, Southern County is working on getting us HVAC completely to twenty thousand dollars, is what our rough estimate right now is. We are putting in three thousand dollars for portable AC for right now.
Okay.
Judge Bondron is wanting to use that fairly quickly too. So the IT, we'll go back to that. So we also, like I was saying earlier, our VPN license, we're trying to go ahead and expand that, we will just prepare this to take the staff have to tell our work. Portable monitors, we want to go ahead, a lot of our staff, I mean, are very, very useless at tools bringing in a lot of things that they do. More efficiently, honestly, when they're getting, when people first start doing it, it leaves my life so much easier. Do for the next few months, that's part of it. And the full-time IT specialist. We are going to go ahead and bring in a full-time IT specialist for the next, well, for the five weeks, five months, CARES will probably, and I will compete for 2021 or later, how we can work that into our budget. But just in what we were talking about with getting the service to everyone here in the county, working with the schools, helping out, we are definitely going to need to get Travis, IT Travis, some help. Yeah, and if, if it comes to telework, even one day this week when everyone, or last week whenever, the VPN that everyone was having trouble getting, it's going to have to be someone that's going to be able to walk them through a lot of things that they're just not used to when they're at home. This person would kind of be that kind of help desk person, our project managers, there will be Travis, that would be, this person would be under Travis. And Fire EMS, what they're needing, we're, it's the nano shield that we're talking about, going ahead to spray around the buildings. Extractors and dryers for the fire EMS PPE is a huge chunk of that, that's fifty-seven thousand. I asked Freddie Wallace here as well. The augers, the nano shield is about forty-seven thousand. And our chief had, had actually thought about doing PPE stations to be placed out in seven multiple buildings, and that's thirty-five hundred. So majority, like I said, is that nano shield and the extractors and dryers. PPE, we're just, we're estimating maybe fifteen thousand. And what they categorize PPE as is not just the face covering and gloves, but also the, like that, that's what they're asking us to categorize that. Facility improvements are the front counters, we're, we're estimating around forty-five thousand, we're wanting to sub that out to a local business, if possible, and generate some revenue for somewhere locally also, because our general properties, they are really stretched thin right now. We need to put counters at each office here in administration. Some of them have existing counters, but some of them don't. So we're looking at building counters for front entrances of each week office area. And then also, if we have an existing counter, we need to go ahead and do a flexi class and things like that, to kind of social distance, making sure no one's coming around or. And that's the best way to figure it out right now. I have talked to the sheriff, and we were talking about maybe we all read the area, there's a couple of different areas in his location that he would probably want a counter built also with the flexi class. We have talked about possibly subbing out security, I'm not sure how the sheriff feels about that, but I have talked to him, we're still kind of chatting about that. Where we would actually use an outside subcontractor to run the security at the, at the building of the courthouse, where we could actually do our staff in the court, where we need them with all these additional court cases that are coming about. Body cameras, Louisiana County had actually came up with the idea that body cameras would actually be CARES funded due to the fact that the officer would actually have it on camera, who was around them if they gave a contact with them. So that's something we're kind of unsure how we feel about that one, though.
It's like another box.
Yeah, definitely thinking about.
We just kind of make sure it's not. And that's, that's my thing, was that question, it's more of a, a grandstanding that any congressman who may be within earshot would be here, which is, it's still insufficient for all the current things that we, that we have to make. You know, especially for localities that, like ours, rural localities, that our biggest challenge is going to be how do we meet the needs of the families that are having to adjust to do school schedules. And it was just not in this bill for us to be able to do it. So we've got a whole pile of money sitting here that we're not probably going to be able to do a whole lot with and frustrating, I don't know, to you guys and to me as well. So I would love to see some congressional action to broaden the reach of this funding. For anybody that's on call, wants to take that back up to DC, in addition to another actual meaningful package, needs to be retroactively worked into the.
One last thing for the sheriff's foundation too. We are thinking that our tough books, that are actually the running laptops that are actually in the vehicles, actually can be compared to CARES because the officer can tell work from the vehicle. We order the tough books that actually have a printer, the printer actually keeps them from having to go in delivery gangs, they can grant them out. So we've kind of been juggling that a lot.
One question, I'm going to the original budget before we had to go back and pretty much go back to almost level twenty. If I remember right, it was something in there about counters, maybe for the commissioner's office or treasurer's office. So, so that's not going to count as something that is already positive.
What I have for right now, do you guys have any questions about any of them?
One thing that I could brought up to Bobby and to say, which is the next conversation we're going to have, which is any opportunities, regardless of what we decide to do ultimately with any programs, if you say childcare, any opportunities for childcare providers to ramp up capacity in any way that we can bring to them. You know, like to say that. It's well documented, our struggles to try to operate something like that, with any help that we can give, that there's a need to operate that, I think it is an opportunity we should.
Yeah, definitely, even with the program, they could actually support some reimbursement for some of the extra, this is back to, I mean, the answer that happened with this five, and I know that, you know, if they have that in there, if it was something that our parks and rec had to do with their summer journey, because we had to buy individual boxes with crayons and, you know, just every, you just don't think about those things, scissors, things like that, that typically, you know, you've got a handful of them sitting on the table and the kids all kind of share, but they had to be very, you know, careful of no sharing, things like that. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I was just wondering, I was thinking about the box again, we didn't have anything on the tool department here, I was wondering since everybody's talking about mailing ballots and.
You actually received your own set of cameras.
I'll bring them down.
Yeah, that was me being here.
Another question.
I'm sorry.
Can we ask you to think about and check on the appropriations from rent, money, mortgage payments, and some people are getting a little bit too. I don't know, it's coming down with the federal and state, is there something we can do locally, if we have immediate family that has problems getting a bit, maybe getting a bit. I don't know that all the federal and state programs fall down to that, or not.
Yeah, I definitely.
But it's something that I think we should consider.
Could someone give me the short topic of what he just said, I, I could not make it out, I'm sore head.
Mr. Moore inquired or asked Natasha to look into whether or not there was an opportunity to provide rent or mortgage assistance on the local level using CARES.
For what?
Rent or mortgage assistance.
Oh, assistance, okay. I, I was just going to throw in there that legal aid is already coming down and defending many of those folks that are in the process, just to let you know that. They were in court the last general district court we had.
Gentlemen, I'm going to follow up with additional care information. As you're aware, thank you very much, August sixth, the third resolution, twenty-fourth sixth, that's the second final allocation of the group fund, which brought our total to two point nine nine million dollars. We had already distributed one allocation to the town westport with two hundred eighty-five thousand, and we will be distributing another two hundred eighty-five thousand to the town once we receive the allocation. Everything was submitted for today to the department of health, the survey was completed, the certificate was signed, we sent them, and we should be receiving the second and final allocation from this date, probably Friday or Monday. And then at that point, we will go ahead and distribute to the town, their last. So where we're at right now is that over the past couple of months, we have been working with you all to get an idea of what you have an appetite to fund. We, there was an agreement to go ahead and allocate up to four hundred and fourteen thousand for the Korean county public school. I did receive a second request from the superintendent, I believe that you have a copy, it's yellow highlighted, it's a number. They're asking for an additional two hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred. And I reached out to Dr. White just to kind of get some clarification on this, because it's a little confusing, but he was right, he responded in time. Of course, you know, cleaning, disinfecting devices and things like that, that's probably understandable. The continuity of instructional and support services, basically what this is, is that that's going to be substitute teachers, because we're going to have teachers that are not going to be comfortable coming to work. They may be at M L A, maybe, probably out sick or whatever. When we talked to John Edwards at the town, his school district had already made the request as well, so, you know, I definitely understand that. The after-school tutoring program that Dr. White is requesting, basically they'd be hiring their teachers at a set hourly rate to provide tutoring purposes for students, but you have, that's, that's probably going to be needed with all the schools that the kids have missed. Additional staff, I mean, the CDC, the NIH recommendations, and that is basically additional staff, probably about four care professionals at the elementary level, and they will be used to staff each school's isolation room for students who present with a fever or who show symptoms of COVID. The next thing that I asked him about was the elective online content and teacher support. And he said, due to the number of students electing to participate in one hundred percent distance learning, approximately four hundred and twenty-five today, we would use an online provider to offer some courses ranging from one seventy-five to three fifty for students. As well as pay twenty to twenty-five teachers that stipend to develop online curriculum for other courses. I asked him about manipulative for individuals who abuse. He stated that manipulative is ingrained, taken by, or used extensively in instruction. They wanted to purchase as many items as possible for each to use to avoid having to share objects. And then the last thing that I did ask him about was the offset emergency childcare for teachers and staff. And his response was that the schools recognize that there is a need for emergency childcare for staff. The schools require two to four care professionals to provide childcare services for students and teachers in A through six grade. He said, without childcare, we anticipate we will have additional staff resigned or staff will fly for the M L A for flying substitute teachers. So in looking at all of these expenses, I really don't see anything that stands out as unacceptable. So I would like you to consider allowing us to go ahead and appropriate the additional two hundred and thirty-one thousand one hundred to the schools as on reimbursement basis, just like the first four hundred were detailed.
Mr.?
Yeah.
Who pays for COVID testing? And I would assume that the schools would have routine testing sometime. I can't imagine that they would.
I don't know if they do have testing or if the care office or the school or if it's the first.
Not necessarily students, but teachers and staff, janitors and things, people that are more susceptible. But there would be a routine testing in place.
Is it not insurance?
I don't know if it pays today, as in New York and.
Well, sure, and it probably depends on what provider you ultimately use, but I would think in most cases, an insurance or digital insurance would cover that.
But if the school was made mandatory, I'm sure I would pay.
Well, the school self-insure.
I'm just, again, I was thinking that we may want to consider what the cost of COVID test is and apply that in the budget as well. Well, we, we have time to do that, maybe we'll stay in front of you. Well, we we have time to do that, maybe we'll stay in front of the COVID. It just kind of popped in my head.
Uh, it's a fair enough question, and none of us seem to have a direct answer to it. I mean, I have my assumption, but but I don't know for sure, so.
Well, I had hoped that by this time in this situation. That V D H would have decided that the health departments that are in every locality, that they would be going to. Um, for the rapid response testing. And, you know, trace contacting, which they're doing the trace contacting, but um. Right now, V D H is just offering, you know, this kind of the hit or miss drive-through. Um, so as far as I know, even with the schools, it is, you go to your primary care physician, or you go to the government, patient first.
But there's not a mandatory test for teachers prior to school season start. I hope we don't, I just hope we don't, colleges requiring mandatory testing.
I can find out when you turn that stuff around and see what he has to say on that.
Problem would be if one, one child tests positive.
Well, I know what Ed's talking about, because for instance, William Mary, we're in Harvard, they're requiring all students to. Prior to taking a, run their acid test before they're, they return to camp. Look at some insurance. Oh, thanks, I I did not see anywhere in in anywhere William Mary's. And anybody knew that.
The next category that we have been discussing with the board is for local business support. And what we've done is we have come up with an application, a couple of guidance documents. And we have created a letter, a mail-out letter, that's going to go through U S postage. Uh, but what we have is, you know, our addresses are eligible businesses either through executive order sixty-three. And executive order sixty-one, um, trying to kind of capture everybody that is eligible, which is quite expensive. And requirements that we are pushing out comes straight off of all of the guidelines is that, you know, the business must have a current business license. From Canadian County, it was certified that they are not required to have one. Uh, they must certify that all of the expenditures they're requesting to be reimbursed for. Uh, or expenses specifically to address the impact of COVID. Uh, they have to certify that the business is physically located in the Keeneland County. And they have to certify that the business wasn't existent prior to March first, twenty twenty, which is the kickoff day for the CARES money to be eligible to use. Uh, they have to certify that reimbursement request will be the only one. And we were having a discussion on that today because one of the citizens that had called Natasha. Um, it's going to be the first come, first served basis with the local business. Um, but, you know, with two point nine million dollars, I think that will be okay. We have a really decided to cap it, but it will be, as as the requests come in, we will. Make that determination like the cat program that the peninsula is offering, probably has a ten thousand dollar cap. And this rebuild Virginia has a ten thousand dollar cap. Uh, of course, the eligible costs identified for reimbursement have to have been extended from March first through December thirtieth. Uh, anything prior to that is not eligible. And all requests for reimbursement will be approved and paid out no later than December fifteenth. So as we go, the county staff and the town staff, uh, to collect everything and gather.
Does someone certify that they, that's a legal use? And there's labor determined that it's not county on the hook for that, or or they, they have to repay us on that.
Um, that would county would be the one. I mean, the reality is that's why we have all of these different checks and balances to make sure. That we address everything. And of course, you know, if we turn a business down, they have the right to appeal it. But all this is on the business, provide us all of the invoices, all of the receipts, all the justification, and their signing that this is all true and valid. Um, the way that we're going to go about publicizing the CARES program for the local businesses is we already have the application and instructions on the county website. Uh, we're going to be doing the same thing for the county Facebook, um, social media that's appropriate. We have a letter that is generated. We decided to do a mass mailing because the Britain order. Businesses we're going to be going out to in person. Um, but you have a lot of, you know, businesses that work out of their homes. Uh, so what we'll do is we'll do a mass mailing, and then we're also going to be utilizing for a mail. I've sunk into multiple businesses just over the last two weeks, hoping about this program, about the rebuild Virginia program. And about the E D A program. And let them know that, you know, if it's British order, moving back. And with that, we're either going to follow up in person, or if they want, you know, the information just in electronic, by that way. So on our website, this is where you're going to find the information, the CARES funding program, I'll go quickly from the left-hand side. And then this is the flyer that Olivia created for us. It addresses where the program is, it provides some URL for people to go to. It'll move that more information on to the contact and what businesses are eligible. So our vision is that when we go and visit the business, we're going to have a flyer, we're going to have the application printed out. We're going to have the guidance document, um, we're going to have the information for rebuild Virginia. Uh, we're going to have just about everything we can, we're going to have the contact business cards, um, we're going to do it all. And then the mailing will then have that additional information as well. So we're going to be trying as hard as possible, but we're going to require support from everybody, for the amount, for the amount. And um, we've already started giving some phone calls once Natasha was stating, people asking about it. And I think that once we probably make that first award, word is going to get out. And we'll be able to start bringing some wonderful um. Award stories. Uh, one thing though, that we are telling everyone that this program is completely transparent. And so if you receive an award, remaining for business and the amount you receive is going to be out there. And you're not going to have to foil for it, it's going to be out there, just like we're dealing with the grants for the E D A. Now, this should be available for everyone to see. So. So I will be, uh, this is the application, I have some fill-in slots and drop-down boxes. Uh, and Olivia did this, will do, and it's very simple. Uh, they just ask for the critical information, the biggest challenge for businesses is going to be pulling all of the receipts. Copying it and making sure that it's a pass. So that's kind of the overall on what we're going to be sending out. Um, then of course, we've already talked about the fifty thousand that's going to be allocated to the development program to pursue the grant. Um, program that they had in place or if you manipulate and change it. Uh, we also have a new account with, we have to speak up to one hundred thousand dollars in reimbursement cost. But because of the additional funding that we never see. Even with adding again the second request by the schools, we are still going to have a balance of about one point three five million dollars. So, um, I did want to ask. The board their feelings on the tax program, the peninsula. Uh, the Southwest Point, which Virginia will put in thirty-two thousand. Uh, they gave out three ten thousand dollar grants already to their businesses. So the town is going to come back with this additional money and they put in touch with us, hundred thousand. Because it's working out so well, so there's that program to consider. Um, the county may have to come back and ask for a little bit more, but um, just like with the extractor and dryer that Natasha was talking about. That was for our fire station, but it's also for magnetic, and it's also for the fireplace. So it's two volunteers. That way, if any of the equipment is down, there are other pieces of equipment that we can utilize. Uh, something else that I'd like you to think about, and I've just got this information from Mr. Lawrence. Length of that means I have not read it. And Mr. Hodges, just so you know what I'm handing out, um, the Camden County supervisors approved using some of the CARES funding for broadband expansion. And I will send you the article for you to review. I really haven't read through it in great detail. But it looks like a lot of the localities are trying to possibly. Build in some broadband expansion with the CARES funding, so that might be an avenue to explore. I believe that's about all that I have at this time on where we stand. I would like to know, though, if you're okay with the second request from the schools, so that I can notify them. Again, a lot of that's personal driven, and that is getting all the diversity. And um, if y'all would be interested in possibly looking at some opportunities for broadband or the peninsula or other other things that can be utilized. That can be interesting, as for.
I'm in favor of sending money to schools. Anything I can do with broadband, I'm definitely in favor of it. I thought it would be a good decision. Pay that money that's not going to be, if they utilize.
There was an email today, Phil, can you hear me?
Uh, yes, so far.
Okay, uh, there was an email today from Commonwealth Connect regarding using chairs for broadband expansion. Their legal disclaimer was that we're not going to make any legal interpretation or regulation on your own. Uh, based on our meeting from.
When?
Wednesday night, um, that individual is supposed to get us a, some verdicts. He says pretty much the same thing that they know of other counties that has used CARES money and broadband. So hopefully within a day or two, we should get some words back.
Y'all.
But I can, if if, if it comes to me to ask the broadband folks, can they give us. An idea of how many homes they could get by December or get on contract by December, we would take. They would just have to build off from what they have. For example, where I live is just across the road from their termination on the northwest end of the county. You'll take buckets to bring me broadband and then eight out of sixteen, seventeen other families. But, or do you want to run through that, Bobby, with the bill? I think I have to break out, Phil, so I can give up the heads off.
Yeah.
I think, I think the broad consensus would be that if there is an opportunity to use some of this funding. Uh, for broadband expansion, we would absolutely be in favor of that. And I both looked through, um, you know, the document that came out from the state treasurer when this stuff was initially allocated. And and didn't really see any immediate opportunities to use this funding for that. However, it's been a couple of months now, and you've had some lawyers and lobbyists that have been able to look it over a few more times. Maybe they found some opportunity.
Other counties are.
Well, it's just not enough to see whether you're using CARES funding, they're just, they're, they're basically deciding on their R S P that they could put out.
Well, I think, I mean, I'm pretty, uh, pretty one of the things, but I think they were looking at a little over five hundred thousand.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, and I said, it's tied directly to CARES I funded, and says it would be great.
But it looks like it was all a team, not like.
Much like what we've done, yeah. So, yeah, absolutely, absolutely, anything I do, because that's, that's one of the biggest challenges that we're, that we're going to have is. How do we, you know, how we facilitate all the distance learning that has to happen when we we lack the vital infrastructure for that? Um, you know, and that's, again, you've got an insufficiently broad bill trying to solve problems that it's not, it's not solving. And this is on the back of, you know, ten years, twenty years, thirty years of insufficient federal and state funding to, to solve what is really a state. Why national line plan with insufficient broadband infrastructure? It's been less, just like solving this whole two to nineteen crisis to the localities, so anything we can do to try to help advance that, I'm going to support.
And I know that one of the things that you brought up just minutes ago was support for the family. When it comes to alternate days, and I'll address a little bit more about when I talk about the parks and rec program. That is just a, that is just a difficult situation. You know, we have facilities in the county that have space for kids. But there again, there's a cost. And it may, it is definitely going to be higher than what the parks and rec program would have for schools. Um, but there again, we're going to have to reduce the number of slots anyway, while we're still considering doing it, so. I don't know, I mean, like, the schools are looking at bringing on some care professionals. Now, for the number of kids that are going to have four of them, that's kind of stretch it pretty thin. Um, but there again, that would just be for the school teachers, maybe some of the aides, I guess. So. We are open to creative ideas on this one, because I, I, I know that y'all have talked to a lot of parents. I have talked to a lot of parents, I've received a lot of emails. And I definitely feel their pain. I was a single parent for nine years without family around. Husband was a single parent, two kids in the army without family around, so. I completely feel their pain, but I just don't know what to do. It's off the mound, so, you know. Um, creative brains or much more intelligent minds, please, take a look at it.
Here's, here's what I'm sitting here thinking as I was reading the document that came from the school. I think it's probably worthwhile to see if we can get a finger on the number of how many kids are coming in from staff of the school. Because I'll tell you, a lot of the outreach that I got from concerned parents were teachers and staff members. Uh, who brought the concerns that Dr. White put to it, which was they were going to have to either quit or find a way to take long-term leave. In order to care for the kids, so we we may find that this is an awful lot of kids that will be serviced as part of this. You know, that way we may be able to do what if you finish. Either get comfortable with the idea that the daycare is actually has a capacity now that's left out there. And we can sleep at night knowing that that's possible. Because I've, I've gotten conflicting reports just as you have, you know, you reach out to them directly and they say, yes, we have a capacity. And the parents reach out and they come in, we call them, whether or not they would actually, uh, take it on. Or we, you know, we find that there is enough, you know, load taken off of anything that we could possibly come up with that might be worth looking at what we could do. You know, we're going from eighty to a hundred to twenty to forty, does that make it something that's manageable for us? Um. Just something to look at, yeah, because I'm right there with you too, you know, I'm, I'm living it right now, my goodness, you know. If William Mary hadn't gone to work from home this summer, I would have been, you know, lurch, because my childcare facility in West Point decided not to do a summer camp. And then the line C A, that they assured it was going to be a summer camp, decided they weren't going to do a summer. But I, I've been right there just months ago, staring down the idea of what am I going to do without access to the level of care needed? I think anything that we can do, we should try to do. At the same time, I understand that we need to do, anything that we try to do, we've got to do within the legal parameters of what we are constrained by. Uh, not only due to COVID restrictions, but due to the fact that if we're going to operate any type of extended program, that there are other restrictions that would come along with that, no matter what. Um, so that's my only thought right now. Let's, let's see if the schools have an idea of what this is going to be, how much load they're taking on. See what's left over and try to make a judgment of what they're recommend to do from there. If that's not reasonable.
That's reasonable. We'll see what we can.
But we're, we're still going to find out if, if we do it that way, we're going to find ourselves in competition with private small businesses that cannot be competitive. You're, you're going to offer a service that could harm. So, and, and I agree with you, we need to find out what the number is and what these available daycare centers can handle. But you would put small businesses in harm's way.
Well, that's why Steph wanted this to me is, okay, well, the capacity, the lesser capacity of what the schools aren't able to take home. Non, you know, non-staff members that were utilizing parks for it. You know, so again, we've got, we've got an idea of what our usership was. And then if the schools have an idea of what their usership is going to be, we can make a reasonable judgment that the difference is with just the lesser capacity to be put out there. That may or may not be true because my goodness, you know, there's people that are out in the homeschools and the number of kids that might need services might be dropping off. There are people who are unemployed, you know, deep account here and there before. So the number can be different.
I've got several phone calls and emails from some constituents and ones who live in other districts that, well, not teachers, that, you know, they, they were getting the service from Park and Rec. And they were basically, the reason that we're angry is because this is going to cost them more to find a daycare from there.
Well, we, so Steph wanted this is that, you know, we, we offered up a service that we probably never should have offered up in the first place. All right, and that, that came out of park management directly, okay? So that put us in a bad situation. But, you know, we never should have been in that situation to begin with. And then the after-school program, obviously couldn't have existed in the same state that it exists. But the fact that, you know, we got hit with the department offering emergency childcare when they never really were authorized to do so in the first place. And then, and then every way, that's kind of put us in this bad spot. So again, if we can kind of guess at what the, the difference is going to be and feel better about the fact that the capacity is out there, then we can either sleep well at night knowing that there was nothing more we could do, or we could see if there's anything we could do, which you can, it just doesn't look like there is a reasonable option to satisfy everybody's need, but also actually that we could meet in short order and ramp up that.
Whatever has to happen has to happen through the schools, right? It can't be a function of, of, and the government.
Well.
Is the county exempt from all the foundational requirements, both for daycare and not?
No. We did, we did a lot of reway, but the, the fact is our facilities need to be up to standard. And that is not where we're at, even if it were out at the park. That's why when we were ready to do the after-school program at the schools, we operated under their umbrella. And so it was not a problem. But thankfully, we just don't have that ability because we don't have the time. I've had to actually get the 360 complex up and running to where it should be. And then I don't have the certification, my people that should be in place. Then of course, we're also convenient against local businesses. And I do have park care about that because we should not be doing that. But let us round table this again and just see if there's, I'll talk to the schools, we'll see about the numbers. And we'll see, I, I mean, I've been talking to the child centers that do have the vacancies, but of course, it comes down to cost and some people just don't want to utilize some of this.
But do we, do you have a good head on what these childcare centers could do if given the resources?
Well, I know that the E form had ten spaces. I know that Fun Form had sixty-nine spaces. And then the one in West Point, I'm not sure, I can't remember.
Yeah, I agree. Is there an opportunity to research, like what Ed was talking about earlier with rent mortgage assistance? Have their costs offset through CARES?
Okay.
Something we can do. And then I, I just one more thing that I, you know, I've been talking with the schools and then probably talking with the senators too. One of the complaints that's being out there from a couple of people are especially kids with special needs. You know, Fun Mark is not taking. You know, so that, that right there is, and that's probably not a great deal of people would make it because there's some opportunity there to work within the schools that maybe they could, through some, some program, bring somebody on to, to take on that task. I don't know. Kind of identify the very high need instances here where people aren't going to be left with no good option or no option at all, and then what can we do to try to help? I found the more I'll let you know.
All right. I think it has to be driven through the school system to keep us out of harm's way.
Yeah, I don't disagree. And I guess one more thing to make clear for those, because I know it seems to be an impromptu call that they're here just to care about this, is, you know, I tried to make clear my conversations and I asked directly to clarify. Once we're through this, you know, the whole reason this is happening is because of, because we don't have programs. We're still doing things that we have been doing, summer sneakers, after-school, no problem. Once we're through this, we're, we're going to go back to doing what, you know, what we were doing and doing it well, making sure that everything's appropriate. We have some opportunity to assess the program and make sure that we're doing it right. But, you know, the after-school and all those things that we were offering will return. One thing we have to return is to return them.
I, I think that there is an opportunity of after-school to return, including on both of those schools. But they will be different. Make sure, because I think those are the years parents have forgotten, that the after-school is not childcare. It is a direct program. And so we will create it or recreate it in more of a direct program situation. So that parents, in case we ever get in this position again, they do understand. Because that's my biggest concern. Yes, you know, I think that we're in this position because there was a lot of miscommunication with the Park and Rec program. And, you know, COVID is making a lot of special exceptions and situations, but Park and Rec is not the charter.
Thank you.
Update on Park and Rec, we're a program.
Well, we just started talking.
Care is part of the.
Well, gentlemen, what you have in your packet is a memo that I have sent out to each of you prior to this being tweaked a little bit input in the packet for public consumption. One of my main goals was to make sure that the public understood that it was me and me alone that made the decision to cancel the emergency COVID childcare program that was being offered, that I had not authorized that program from the get-go and found out about it after the fact. And like I said just previously, we cannot be perceived as a childcare program lately. As far as the after-school program, we were just running into some situations that I was extremely uncomfortable with. The Parks Department had put on the summer journey and put in some wonderful protocols. Really thought it out well on how they were going to manage the kids and staff. And we still had an incident that created a lot of issues. Some of the parkers picked up positive here, some of the kids, thankfully the kids were not, when they tested, they were not positive. But, you know, some of the children then immediately went on vacation in another state. I mean, this is kind of like the domino effect. And even though the kids were negative, it put them in a direction. So between that and finding out that we were supposed to transport the kids from school to the after-school program through the complex, but we're not able to do it either because that is not what we do, we don't transport children. When we were offering the after-school program at the schools, we always worked under the school's umbrella. What we did do is we would pay a CBL school plus driver to drive. And then the schools would either grant or just allow us to utilize one of the school buses. All the liability, all of that was covered by the schools. So between the COVID implications and the safety and wellness for the staff and the children, transportation issues, the fact that the 360 complex, I was a little concerned. I bought fifty kids, it was a lot. I mean, even though it's seven thousand square feet, that's a lot of kids to try to core out and keep stuff ready. And so I made the decision, I realized that y'all have taken a lot of the kids, and so I wanted to publicly state, I made the decision on changing before this, this school year. I'm hoping that things can get back to normal, that we can go back to using school facilities, but I'm just waiting for that to go down. I gave you some background information in this packet that talks about kind of the Park and Rec after-school programs started and how we handled everything. And I did make, you know, a commitment that once COVID is passed and we can kind of get back to somewhat of a normal life, then we will look again at the after-school program in a different approach. Definitely as a recreational program. But while I'm giving you an update, I do want to provide some information to you. Last week, I did renew Jennifer Leves as the manager of the Park and Rec program. I actually am very fortunate to have two amazing employees in that program, Kayla Huffman and Allison Patterson. And that never had applied for the manager position when I hired Jennifer. Kayla has a fourth medicine degree at Radford. She just finished her MBA at Radford. Allison Patterson has a, I think, a points wellness degree from Christopher Dufour University. They've been with us, they've been doing a great job, they've been doing a lot of the work. And I think that that team will do, will make some job. One of the things Natasha, Amina, and I met with both Kayla and Allison this morning to talk about all programs. To talk about the after-school program, talk about the 360 complex and the rec section, what we're going to do out at the park. And I tasked them with coordinating with the local businesses, whether it be a child center or any other type of business, to start really integrating the community into our programs. We talked a lot about the different types of programs that we'd like to go after. Definitely are still interested in, in, you know, working with, you know, middle school, elementary. But there is a market that is really not being had, and that is the theme. Because even the chances of you aging old at twelve, so pretty much, there's really not that many programs unless it's here to use the high school for teens. We also have an awful lot of adults that we have some good adult classes, but we really need to expand them. We need to offer them in the evening, we need to offer them on the weekends so that people that work can actually take advantage. And one of the other things that I talked to them about was, you know, one of the things COVID has really brought forward is homelessness creates. And when we go into day rec studies, and it starts by the bar, people are going to be really lonely. And so Kayla and Allison both committed to me that we are going to have art classes, music classes, exercise classes, thought training classes, whatever, you know, we're really going to expand them and, you know, try to offer a lot more stuff so people can get on. It may be one class, beginner doctrine class, one class. Or maybe it's an art class that, you know, a student could help us instruct, that might be a couple of classes. So we've got some really good ideas, and that's what we're trying to do is to let it hitch. We're also trying to make sure that the team has a place that's constructive to go to. They're also talking about doing music in the park, having some local band show up, maybe doing movie in the park, blow up screens, kid stuff or adult stuff. But so we're really looking at what the community needs and what can be beneficial if they need. And then we wrapped up the meeting this morning with both of ladies making sure that they understood that they have amazing resources and staff. Natasha for finance and budget, Amina for HR and personnel. And so I think that we're moving in the right direction with our Park and Rec program.
Would you be willing to add a third question to the long-term members to job advertising?
The, for the rec special?
Whatever, whatever.
Mrs. Welton, the partner.
No, she was.
Regardless, now that she's moved into the director position, there's, there's a void now, David's here. Phil now?
We are going to fill that. And the reason of the war is because of Park and Rec's presence. And we're going to try to make that last as long as possible, but I have committed to the Park and Rec staff, full-time and part-time, that we will support them. And so we can get back to programs where they're really friendly on the, on the beginning. So, but, you know, this has really taught us an awful lot. Definitely made us go through some walks of fire, but we have a really good layout for how we're going to handle all of these new classes. And instructors will agree that all registration goes through our system, that we give a percentage, which usually the percentage to most localities is fifteen percent, and then the balance is paid to the instructor for putting the class on. And so that will continue to bring it in, and we'll also keep our full-time rec staff going and contributing. I think, I think if the positive is going to be different, but, you know, they're young, maybe.
So, are we going to go back to the ten percent for instructors or, or will we increase that to twenty percent?
Fifteen.
Fifteen.
I think what we were nearing was most of the other locality in the county, forty-five percent. And I think that's reasonable.
I may have started the Park and Rec do a fantastic job. We've been lucky to have a couple of, you know, leading directors and, you know, I know the husband has deep roots in the community. So I'm excited about that, but I think, but I know and Mr. Barber knows now because it's a few months on, they want to generate drama. I could have generated drama.
They're not much anymore. It's good that it's not all about ball. But Bobby Owens, ninety-four, he can open, open minded and even kind of keeps the county in harm's way with his decision. And it was probably the wrong decision.
Moving on to four C, resolution twenty dash forty-seven petition the court to hold a special election to fulfill the county treasurer's vacancy due to retirement.
And sure, Mr. Lewis has put in his retirement effective office report. And we've had many discussions with the county attorney concerned as per code. The deputy in that office is placing him in a position, and that would be Mary Welton. And then the election would be held as a special election, unless it is held on a regular election time. Our next regular election is November third, twenty twenty. The resolution you have in front of you twenty dash forty-seven is the resolution that our county attorney developed. And it would petition the court to allow us to hold the election for the treasurer of the court. Now, I have been working with Allison Foxer, General Legislature. Now, I have been working with Allison Foxer, General Registore. Um, she's been amazing to work with. She has done into a lot of statutes. She has followed a lot of people. Um, enrichment, trying to get as much clarification as possible. Uh, the downside to approving resolution twenty dash forty seven has been is that if you approve it tonight, then our county attorney will take that to Judge Bonkra tomorrow. He will issue the petition and order. And then it will go back to General Registore and at that point, an individual that is interested in writing for the treasurer's petition, um, will have approximately two and a half days to get their petitions together and all of their, um, candidacy documents. The reason being is because, um, the cutoff date is Friday, October fourteenth, seventeen. Now, y'all are fine with that. That's correct. Um, I have an alternative uh, that I'd like you to consider is resolution twenty dash forty seven R. And that would move the special election to February second, twenty twenty one, which would allow, um, time for us to publicize the position, time for, I think, the candidates to get all of their signatures, candidacy documents in order, and, um, then we would have the election on February second. Special election is probably going to cost the county about ten to twelve thousand dollars just on the electoral side. Uh, I would say probably at least another three thousand on the county attorney side. Saving money, we can have it on November third. That doesn't give much time to people. Uh, otherwise we're talking to be looking at spending about fifteen thousand dollars if we have a, um, failure. So I would like your direction. Um, I have both resolutions.
I think it needs to be February second. I don't know how hard it was to get this interest. And I think Steve had mentioned, um, one particular candidate didn't manage to get it done in the weekend, but he had a lot of would you not want somebody to go, he had no earthly idea. It takes that's just me. I was just looking at trying to save money.
Yeah, I'm, I'm thinking about that too.
Well, what I am beginning to hear is the resolution twenty dash forty seven R. And, um, it basically states, um, February second, twenty twenty one, November, November third, twenty twenty. Uh, we still have to do the petition in Congress, uh, but it would give our county attorney, but we're trying to get it up to Judge Bonkra. It would give General Registore time, um, to get everyone set off, um, accurately. Then all the action in their favor. So, um, whatever your decision is, we'll make note.
Do we need to do this? Even if we do the amended one tonight, or would we wait? Do we, do we want to do the R now?
It'll do.
But he doesn't have to have this one, so we'll like probably the first one, but this one's what? Well, it still ultimately alters the date from which it can start to file. Oh, that's right, forty five days before February.
There might be some people out there that would be so discouraged. You know, that, that may, that might do it. Just don't be, every word is exact.
Oh, I don't know. I, I, I think it's just, it, it's too much of a logistical crunch to, you know, say anybody, um, to, to try to pull up, you know, have the same history drive. Um, I don't see how logistically that's fair to the democratic process to try to pull that up quite frankly. So I would be fine making a motion to adopt resolution twenty dash forty seven R.
Okay. Information, name, property, say this is a special.
Mr. Robert? Mr. Moran?
Hi.
Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Greenwood?
I'd like to maybe have a discussion about this boat landing on Dad's Mill Road. I know it's close to the place sometime and I've had probably four people ask me about it. I know that it was some problems there. But it is a piece of property that's home to the county and some of these people are value hackers. You know, I don't know what, what problems it was, but, um, we're having a discussion. We can go over some of the history and do some of the actions there.
Uh, Olivia, could you repeat what Mr. Garber said?
Mr. Garber would like to have a discussion on, um, about the boat landing that's on Dabney's Mill Road. He's been getting some questions about it and it's county owned property.
Okay.
Um, I, I knew that we had set aside, I just wanted to have a discussion about irony. I know there were reasons that we put that on, but I would like to get that back and work that to be practical to have that discussion.
I would like an A to Z review and recommendation for college park. I, I know bits and pieces. All of us know bits and pieces. But I think, uh, it's time to put that place to bed or start to put it to bed if at all possible. And, uh, if we could get a, a, what I call a background paper where how it got to the way it is and what needs to be done to resolve. I'm just, I'm trying to have it. Just to, just to close our video out. We're, we're losing so many opportunities. In black and white, we can all read it and understand. Everybody's on.
Oh, yeah. And, and that's, that's probably good for public education as well because there's a lot of misunderstandings about uh, what, what our options even are at this point. And they are few and unreviewed.
A lot of businesses and then eventually they might lose.
Sure. So yes, all the more reason that I think that paper is a fine idea. And, and again, I'm not, no. We need to understand, I think as clear as possible, what our options are. It might even be good to have, uh, Andrew give, you know, a, a, a whirl at this one because obviously we have answers that we got from previous legal counsel. Always good to get another opinion on, on exactly what those options are. You know, what timelines are. We need to update the timeline of the general assembly and, and the actions that they've taken to defer. Uh, you know, being able to access the bond money is and things of that nature. Um, but it's just been a while since we've really talked about it.
Don't forget Bill. Don't forget.
Oh, yes, Mr. Hodges, yes. Any, uh, ideas or just situations you want to bring up? How about?
Not a whole lot. Uh, the thing dealing with Dabney's Mill, is that really the counties or does that belong to, uh, what are they calling themselves? Wildlife or resources now?
You are.
Yeah. Most of those are owned by them, but I don't know for sure on this one.
They're saying it's ours.
Okay, okay. Uh, I don't really have any, anything else. Uh, I mean, unless somebody convinced me a little bit earlier, uh, better than what I am. I, I don't think the county itself should be in the daycare business. Uh, that's my opinion. I know there's a need. I do, I do understand that it's tough on all of us and it's not going away anytime soon. But I don't think we as a county should be in, operating those type. So I don't think we have the expertise or, or the, we, we don't want to lie about it. But other than that, I, I don't have anything else to add really. I guess the one recommendation I could make is to do better with this audio because it is, it's really bad, uh, with, with part of y'all just on, on the mics. And then, uh, I'm on Zoom and, uh, I can hear the Zoom folks real good, but, uh, and, and most of the time Travis. But the rest of you, most of the time, I don't even know what you're discussing.
The mic is all the way over there?
Yeah.
These are not, so, so, you know.
Yeah, eventually.
Honored, Mr. Chairman, in accordance with section two point two dash thirty seven eleven eight one of the Virginia High School Board Supervisors Committee enclosed meeting, to consider personnel matter involving the appointment of individuals to boards and commissions. Furthermore, in accordance with two point two dash thirty seven eleven eight seven of the Virginia High School Board Supervisors Committee enclosed meeting, uh, to consult with legal counsel on a matter of actual litigation offers for, uh, probable litigation, which may be handled.
Second.
Properly seconded, going to clerk session.
Mr. Moran? Mr. Miskowski?
Hi.
Mr. Hodges?
Hi.
Mr. Garber? Mr. Greenwood?
I just, I know we're going in now, but are y'all moving somewhere or?
Yes, they're going to be in Bobby's office, so I will be ending this Zoom and starting the one that I expected to be.
Okay, I got it. Yeah, thank you.
All right, no problem.